I wait till Steve gets us up.
I might as well make sure we're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready.
We're not, here I come. Like to call to order the November nineteenth, twenty twenty, Myhamsburg City School District Board Meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands. Under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Hey, Tim.
Yes, sir.
You're on about a one second or one and a half second delay.
Well, during the pledge, it cut out over and over.
Oh, you didn't.
So I'll give, I'll give you this if it's a yes and that if it's a no, how's that?
Amen. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mrs. Angel?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Here.
Doctor Blessing?
Present.
I'm present. Mr. Homan?
Here.
Okay, we're all here one way or another. Next, um. Like to have a motion to adopt the November nineteenth, twenty twenty, board agenda. I have a motion.
I move we adopt the November nineteenth, twenty twenty, uh, agenda for this evening.
I second it.
And a first from Mr. Amsler, second from Mrs. Neese. Any questions about the agenda?
No, sir.
Mrs. Hagman?
I just have one comment. We did have to remove one MOU at the last minute, so when we get to that section in the consent agenda. But, um, other than that, there were no changes to the agenda, so. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
That item is passed. Next, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. For the October fifteenth, twenty twenty, regular board meeting and special board meeting held on November twelfth of twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes for the regular board meeting, October fifteenth, and the special board meeting, November twelfth.
Second, please.
I second it. I was trying to give Tim a chance. Oh, wow.
Okay, made a first for Mrs. Angel, second for Mrs. Neese. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, moving along. Next, we'll go to the approval of the financial report dated October thirty first of twenty twenty. Motion. Come on, Tim, we're waiting on you.
Talk to me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're Tim.
You cut out.
Okay, I, 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 I tested.
The finance report, October thirty one, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we had a first from, uh, Mr. Lewis, second from Mr. Amsler. Any questions? Mrs. Hagman?
Well, I was hopeful that we would get our final settlement in October, so the, the differences that we're seeing in our per property tax collections, from what my estimates were to what we, what the actuals are, is just a timing issue. Because we did get our final settlement, as you all know, because we discussed on November twelfth, the first week, early in the week, uh, um, early in the month in November. So, um, the differences that you're seeing, the variances, are all related to a timing issue with the taxes. Um, we did see a one point eight percent drop, as you know, as we discussed on November twelfth, but that'll show up on your November, um, reports since we didn't receive those until then. So unless anyone has any questions.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes. Oh.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, now it is passed. Uh, next, we'll move on to recognition of citizens, staff, and students. All visitors who may have concerns and have not asked in advance to be placed on the agenda. They bring their concerns and/or questions to the Board of Education at this point in the meeting. Please state your name, address, and what organization you represent. A maximum of thirty minutes of public participation may be permitted at each board meeting. I'd like to bring to the attention, um, of everyone that the board does care about what people have to say. And, um, we would, uh, hopefully enjoy, um, the public participating whenever they feel the need to. Um, I did have some, um, people who, uh, had, I, I had talked to or had sent me lots of emails the last few days, uh, and texts, um, that, um, wanted to know what they could do to, um, to, to speak at the meeting. And I tried to explain to them what they needed to do, but I don't see anything. It didn't, nobody received anything in the central office. I told them they needed to go through the central office.
Yeah, I didn't receive anything, no, sir.
Doctor Blessing, you didn't hear anything from anybody about speaking?
I did not get any green forms. That is correct.
Okay, did you have any requests to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
And Dale, I can do the, uh, student of the month for October.
Okay, good.
So will we honor that student next month?
Say that again, Sharon.
I said, will we honor that student next month if you can't speak to it tonight?
Well, I can speak to it. Uh, I'm assuming that they'll probably do as they've done, uh, in previous months, is they'll just go out to the school like Doctor Blessing has done.
Actually, they're pictures.
Yep, yeah, so, but I can speak to it tonight. It's up on the website, so. Even though I don't have the sheet in front of me, I can.
Appreciate it. Let me get there. Um, board discussion. Uh, we have the five-year forecast from Mrs. Hagman.
Well, we usually do the student of the month first, and then I'll do the five-year forecast, right?
We can do that.
We can do it at the end either way, but, but, yeah, that's fine. Go on ahead. If you want to do it now.
It doesn't matter. I'm ready if you're ready.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, the Myhamsburg City School District, uh, October Student of the Month is Bauer Elementary School fifth grader, uh, student RJ White. He was nominated by Bauer fifth-grade teachers. They said RJ has made a wonderful impression on us during his first two months as a fifth grader at Bauer. On the first day of school, he willingly and without being asked, helped a student to her bus. Uh, this new student was so impressed that, uh, she left, she let her teacher know how helpful he was, uh, to her. Since then, he has been a terrific role model for the other fifth graders by demonstrating polite manners, participating in class, hardworking, and doing this, uh, to his best of his abilities. RJ's positive attitude and contagious as he makes others feel appreciated and welcome. He also follows all of the classroom harmony goals. RJ is committed to his schoolwork. During our week, two-week quarantine, he completed all of his work intended our, uh, Google meeting sessions. When we asked his fourth-grade teachers why, uh, or what they remembered about RJ, they said that he was hardworking, polite, kind, and dedicated. Hopefully, by following RJ's lead, we can all learn to become better students and/or citizens. Congratulations to RJ. Uh, you deserve this, and congratulations for being the, uh, district's student of the month for October. Congratulations. The rest of them I will do, uh, towards the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, RJ. I hope you get to watch this exciting meeting on television. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Now we're at the board discussion.
Oh, now we're Tina. See, I was confused I get whenever we don't have all this stuff on here.
I know. It is, it's been crazy.
Hagman, please go on ahead with it.
Okay. Um, gonna cover the presentation rather quickly because it's pretty much the same presentation we discussed on November twelfth, but you guys have had an opportunity to review the five years that I provided to you at that time. Um, so feel free to ask any questions as we go along here. The first thing is always assuming what your revenues are going to be for the first year on the next slide. And I made five material revenue assumptions. Um, property tax collections, what were down, an additional one point eight in twenty twenty, and I'm assuming that's due to COVID nineteen, um, and decreased revenues. Um, so, you know, I'm hoping that that will come back. It appears to be mostly commercial properties, so we'll take a look when the first half collections come in in January and February to see if we're still running at that additional one point eight or if that has gone up any. Um, I'm assuming that will renew our emergency levy in November twenty-two. And I'm assuming per, um, the state funding chan-changes in House Bill one sixty-six, that we're gonna get our, our funding at fiscal year nineteen levels and not, um, have the further reduction of that nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars that we had in fiscal year twenty and twenty-one. Um, so just to touch on it again, we need to renew our emergency levy before December twenty-two and renew our, um, substitute emergency levy before December twenty twenty-five. This is just a chart that shows visually what we're talking about. When you look at the five-year forecast, you'll see a big dip in the, um, revenues received, and that's because when the levies are up for renewal, I have to move it down to a different section of the five years. So it like drops to section, you know, eleven point oh one or something like that. But, um, that's why you see that huge dip, but we are seeing declining, um, cash balances and revenues.
So Tina, is it December twenty-second or the, I see twenty-four and twenty-six, or those, okay. That's because, can you explain that right there, the yellow part? Does one expire in twenty-two?
Right, and collections don't start until the following year, so we don't see the drop until, until those collections are started.
But with this chart, even with the renewal of the levies, it looks like we are in twenty-twenty, twenty-three, going to be in the whole lot.
If, yes, so if the, if the if the levy expires in twenty-two, twenty-three, we run it again, and then the collections start in twenty-four, twenty-six. If we don't get it, um, passed, then that you have, I have to move it to a different part of the five years. So that's where you see that little yellow section there. Um, but we are looking at declining cash balances, so you're correct. With, the green line shows that, um, with the renewals, we're in place further out. We're still looking at, you know, declining cash balances in twenty-three. Um, this is just a bar graph that illustrates, um, our dependence on those levies and how important they are to our financial viability and that we need to continue those. I think I said December twenty-two on the first slide, and it should be December twenty-three, so that's why it's confusing. I apologize. Because this one says December twenty-three, last renewed, November seventh, twenty seventeen, renewed for five years. This is the one that we discussed previously about making that a substitute emergency levy if we go out for renewal, um, and possibly looking at whether or not we want to renew for five years, ten years, or make it a continuing. It's something for the board to discuss, and we can discuss as time goes on, but just keep that in mind. Um, and then the next is the substitute emergency levy, collections until December twenty twenty-five. Um, we renewed that November fifth, twenty nineteen, again for five years. What's interesting is House Bill one sixty-six, which was the biennial budget for fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, we're currently in twenty-one. Froze our funding at fiscal year nineteen levels. We weren't gonna get any more, no matter how many more kids you got or how many kids you lost, which, you know, works. But then with COVID, um, which I don't think anybody expected, um, May sixth, twenty twenty, we saw a cut of nine hundred and sixty-eight, seven twenty-six, and then they froze us at that level for fiscal year twenty, for twenty-one. So for this biennial budget, we actually received one point nine million dollars less than we initially anticipated. Um, but we are, I am assuming for years out that we are gonna be funded at that fiscal year nineteen level. I didn't keep us at the nine six, with the nine sixty-eight reduction. So if there's a change to that, that'll have a material effect. But I just, I'm hopeful, I'm not seeing the state's revenues get hit as hard as they thought. I'm hopeful that with the rainy day funds, that they won't take any additional monies from the school, and we'll go back to fiscal year nineteen levels at a minimum. But it's hard to predict, so, um, just our pie chart that shows fifty-three point three percent comes, of our revenue, comes from real estate and taxes, so from the community, local resources, it's a total of sixty-three point eight, and state resources, thirty-six point two. So what happens on the state level does have an impact on us because it's almost forty percent of our revenue. The challenges that I'm seeing to our revenue right now, um, is like I said, House Bill one sixty-six and the loss of one point nine million dollars that we anticipated having moving forward. Um, restricted student wellness and success money is great, but it's placed in a restricted fund, a four sixty-seven, um, and it's not general fund money, but we could use some of it for the content, to expand on the programs that we already had in place. So we were able to, you know, help the general fund a little bit by doing that. Now, the governor says student wellness and success funds are gonna stay in place, but we don't know that yet, and we don't see, we don't have any information on future state budgets. But we're hopeful that it'll continue. It's his initiative, but we're hopeful. It is not in the forecast currently, so if that does happen, that will have a material effect only if we pick up existing costs with that money. So in essence, revenues need to grow and levies need to be renewed to keep pace with our current expenses. Or our expenses need to shrink to match our revenues, so one of the two need to happen. You guys have been on the board long enough to know the four areas that we spend our money, salaries, benefits, purchase services, and supplies. And most of that, eighty-two percent, a little over eighty-two percent, is salaries and benefits. Which the next slide is just the total expenditures in a pie form, in a pie chart. I think Steve's gonna share it. He's got it. I went through that one rather quickly, Steve. I know, it's hard. Okay, so the le, the next chart, pass the pie chart, one more. There we go. Is our available cash negative fiscal year twenty-three, even with renewals? So this is just a different way of looking at the bar, the line chart we saw earlier. Um, in fiscal year twenty-three, um, we are looking at negative cash. Now, you know, that scares me because fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, I think we're down to about fourteen thousand in, um, cash at the end of the year, which is not enough for a district our size. But there are a lot of variables in there that need to be examined and looked at, and a lot of assumptions. Um, but I do think it's time for us to start looking at how we can streamline some of our costs. Um, we have maintained, we want to go to the next slide, we have maintained positive cash flow since two thousand and eleven. And twenty twenty, which is the year we got hit with that nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar reduction, was our first year with deficit spending since two thousand and seventeen. Deficit spending being we just, we spent more money than we received that year, sort of dipping into your savings account. We've got to keep a watchful eye on those five areas, uh, revenue areas, to make sure that those monies will be coming in because it's gonna be vital to make sure that we have all that and keep an eye on our spending because we're gonna need to start looking at things that might be able to be streamlined or eliminated. So we still, some variables are unknowns for us, is that we still don't know the full economic impact of COVID nineteen. You know, we still don't know how that's gonna affect local and state funding from this point on. Um, and we don't know the future biennial budget for fiscal year twenty-two or twenty-three, or twenty-four and twenty-five. So there are, you know, a lot of uncertainties, but we are required by law to submit this, so we're gonna do that. But I anticipate there's gonna be some significant changes made to it as we know more. Um, I'm hoping that the fixture will be better, but I don't think it'll be, yeah, a whole lot better unless we make some changes in house as well.
So what you're saying, Tina, is by the end of twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, we don't even have savings to spend?
Correct. We will have spent all of our savings. We'll be down to the fourteen thousand. If, if all of my assumptions are a hundred percent, that's where we're gonna be. Um, and I did ask other treasurers to look at my assumptions, and we talked about it and, and, you know, trying to make sure that I, you know, don't want to be chicken little running around saying that the sky is falling. But this COVID, you know, pandemic did hit all of us pretty hard. And left us with a one point four deficit spend last year, which we're gonna double this year. So we're looking at a three point two, um, dip into our savings accounts, so to speak.
So Tina, is there still in place that state takeover when you're physically not responsible or don't have the money to operate?
Typically, when you submit your five-year forecast, in the first three years of the forecasted years, so this case it would be fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, if you show a negative balance in any of those years, that will prompt ODE to send you a letter. Ask what your plan is, um, how are you gonna get your budget back in a lot, in alignment, blah, blah, blah. We're not there yet, we're barely there. We squeaked by with fourteen thousand still in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, if you submit a plan that's not, you know, that they don't think is gonna fix your, your deficit, or you continue to show a deficit a year out, then they start to bring in their people, yes. Fiscal watch, fiscal caution, however it works. I've never been there, and I hope I don't ever have to be, so.
But that could mean cuts we don't want to make.
Right.
Cuts that would put us at the bare.
Right.
Bare, bare minimums.
You know, state minimums is what they'll, they'll advocate for, which is, you know, no transportation within two miles, outside of two mi, within two miles, I gotta say that right. And things like no high school transportation, you know, a lot of the services that we provide that our community needs, they will say you need to cut those kinds of things, yeah. So it's best for us to look at those and realign what's best for our community because we know what our community needs better than anybody else coming in, so.
Tina, you may not be able to answer this off the top of your head, and if not, it's okay.
Okay.
Do it later, but, um, curiously, um, obviously, we're, uh, spending more money right now, uh, in, uh, in the COVID era than we would, uh, in a regular school year. Um, do you have any idea, uh, right now, what, uh, the compare, what a good comparison would be for a month? Or maybe, uh, for you, it might be easier to say six months, but I.
For our monthly expenses?
Our monthly expenses, how are they compared now than they say they were a, a year ago in the same time period?
Well, a year ago, it's a little hard to do that because a year ago was, well, not a full year ago.
Yeah, a full year ago.
Yeah, it would have been a full year. Yeah, I'd have to go back and look because typically I, you know, we're, we're spending about four to six, four point six to four point seven. Um, there are less events, less things that require overtime and things of that nature. So I'd have to go back and look. I wouldn't be able to say right off the top of my head.
Yeah, it'd just be interesting to, to see the, you know, comparison side by side on that one.
And with that said, is, are, are all the COVID expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one included in the budget? It's all there or?
Fiscal year twenty-one, most of our COVID-related expenditures are being covered with, um, Corona Relief Fund money, um, grants that are coming from various sources. As you know, Montgomery County's commissioners provided us with a grant. We've gotten a grant, or a couple grants from the ESC. We've had our own cares money that we're using to pick up some salaries. Um, so as that rolls away, I'm more concerned of how we sustain it because I don't think that the need for hand sanitizer or, um, you know, additional cleaning and disinfectant is gonna go away anytime soon. But this year, we've got all this extra help, but we're not allowed to hoard or bulk order and keep the, it has to be used by December thirtieth. A lot of these grants do. So we've got to be very careful. So that extra has not really been, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out what that cost is gonna be and what that extra might have to look like in our forecast. There's a little bit of, you know, increase that we put in those areas, but we haven't done a full analysis because we haven't been through a full school year yet. It's sort of hard. First year that we've had to have hand sanitizers and, and, and PPE and face masks for the kids and things of that nature, so. Maybe by the, well, certainly by the May forecast, we'll know what those actual costs were, so we can look at it better.
Steve? Family first at all or not?
Well, I don't know how many of you know family, there was a federal act that was passed that allows for Family First Corona Relief Act is what it's called, and it is additional time off work, um, for people that have to be quarantined and/or are, um, sick. Um, so in addition to that, there's a, um, so it gives you, gives an employee up to eighty hours or ten days. Whatever your, if your hour, if your hours per day are six, then you get sixty hours. If your hours per day are eight, then you get eighty hours. Um, so an individual can have up to eighty hours of leave if they're quarantined or have been exposed to coronavirus and can't come to work. So they won't use their sick leave, won't use personal leave, won't use vacation. They'll use that leave first. Um, and if a child is, if you have an employee whose son or daughter attends a school that's closed or remote and they can't find childcare, you know, help me with this one, Steve, that way, gives them an additional.
Ten weeks.
Ten weeks of leave. And, um, it's up to two hundred dollars per day. Now, they can say, as a teacher who makes more than two hundred dollars a day, they can say, well, we'd like to use some of our sick leave towards that, so we get our full per diem and all of that. But we have to report that on our nine forty-ones, and we have to report that on our W, our employees' W-twos, um, at the end of this year. For what purpose? I don't know. But we have to report all of that. So we're working with Steve's team, my team, and Steve's team are working closely to identify everyone and who's on that leave and when they can return and who's, you know, how much they're getting paid. And I think last time I looked at it, which was a couple of days ago, and it changes daily, we had spent in excess of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in additional leave.
And that's up to possible four hundred and eighty hours, correct?
No, it's eighty, four hundred and eighty hours.
Total?
Well, you get for your first two weeks if, if you're, if it's you or you're caring for someone who's quarantined or has COVID.
That's eighty hours?
Eighty hours, so ten workdays or whatever equivalent per hour is.
And then ten more weeks?
You can get ten more weeks.
That's for childcare only.
Right, there are certain parameters that go along with that, but that would be correct. That's where the two-thirds comes in. So as we see other schools where our teachers, our teachers' kids go and teach that are going full remote or whatever the childcare is, that's an additional cost to us because we have to put us up in that room and we're still paying them a two-thirds and there's no leave coming out of the employees' account.
Right.
Okay, so that's two-thirds of their, that's assuming it's the forty-hour week.
Yeah, whatever their hours would be, two-thirds of, yes.
Up to two hundred, that's the max.
Right.
So, but we can supplement with their leave if they choose that, but.
The only people who could really tack on to that leave to make themselves whole would be if they have personal days, if they'd be comp time, or if they're an employee that would acieve vacation, but they can't use sick leave per however you vice code because that's not an appropriate use of sick leave for that, so.
Wind must be blowing hard like they said. In the data, they're just spooked.
So, and, and that's one of the reasons I kind of looked over Tina and said you were going to talk about family first because a lot of people think, well, you're going to get reimbursed for that. That's, that's a, that's a no fund me, that's something you have to front.
One of those precious unfunded mandates. For private employers, they do, they can get a tax credit towards your social security with the social security that they pay. But we don't pay into social security. And so when you read through the tax credits, we don't pay those taxes, so we don't get those tax credits. And it says federal, state, local governments are not eligible for any credits, you know, including school districts. So, you know, it's just another thing we have to pay for. Needed, but not getting any additional assistance with that.
And this would not be a school board meeting in the last two years if I didn't ask this question. Where, where are we standing at as far as devices?
Well, we just got some good news today. Dr. Blessing, did you want to cover that?
I'm sure. The Montgomery County ESC has been working with all of the county schools and helping us with funding our technology. So at every meeting, Amy does a great job and says, who out there needs Chromebooks or devices? Or, you know, we, you know, bus wifi. So at the beginning of the year, we revised our request and I got a notification this evening that we are getting fifteen hundred Chromebooks. So that is pretty exciting. It, it kind of looked like a loner at first and I just got some clarification Tina that theirs are ours to keep. We just have to, you know, keep the maintenance up on them, but they do come with a three-year warranty and a couple battery replacements. So this is pretty cool because I know Tina, last month, we received news from the Montgomery County that we're getting a grant also. So we are going to have some planning to do because we're going to have some additional Chromebooks. So very exciting. We'll get the paperwork and get that started tomorrow. And I think they have them at their site, so we should be able to pick them up in the next couple of weeks. Fingers crossed.
Right.
Yay.
We've got the orders placed for the additional two thousand. We just aren't sure when they're going to arrive. But we're, we're also getting the additional fifteen hundred. So that's thirty-five hundred additional Chromebooks this year, so.
Yeah, and we certainly can use them.
Dr. Blessing, did you say it was from the ESC and a foundation?
Well, through the cares money, I mean, I can read the exact email to you here. Let me grab it as I pull that up. Sorry, I didn't realize. They, the, the Montgomery County ESC was working on getting, you know, cares money funneled through. And I believe it was through the foundation, but let me check because she said it there in the letter. I'm just having a hard time pulling it up. Oh, there it is, sorry. She said, here it is. Well, that was my response. Okay, the care, it's through the Montgomery County cares. That was where the, the grant money that they applied for Chromebooks for all of the Montgomery County, Montgomery County schools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, Mrs. Hagman, the, the, the short five-year forecast ended up being a pretty good one.
It did, yeah.
Not the news we wanted to hear.
No.
Thank you. Well, some of it was really good. Some of it not so good.
So I always just had a question about when will we start planning for the, to replace the twenty-two emergency levy? When will we start planning for that?
Well, we're going to have some meetings, like I think the first one's on November thirtieth. But we need to start looking at how we're going to streamline our costs first, I think. And then we need to talk about the possibility of new money in November of two thousand twenty-one. And then I think we move on to discussion on the renewals and how we want to handle that. That's just my opinion on the timeline, but we can certainly do whatever the board seems, you know, wants to do.
We just can't,
Thank you.
go mingle them, that's for sure.
Right, we don't want, I would not advocate or suggest that the board run a renewal alongside new money. People get confused. The language is ambiguous at best, you know, it's always confusing. We never make things easy in school funding. So I would, you know, not want to run anything two on any ballot, so it just isn't good. But we do have a financial task force and we are going to continue looking at those kinds of things and moving forward, so.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Mr. Lewis, you okay?
I have a Chromebook question. Is this the appropriate time?
Lay it on us.
Are we any closer to knowing what students in our district are in need of Chromebooks?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have.
Yeah. You don't want any elaboration?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Moving on. Next we'll get to the consent agenda for everyone. The two A is going to be omitted for this evening. And we'll move on to two B. We have one MOU for two A. We just took one of them off.
Okay.
Okay, well, that was confusing.
All right, it's no, yeah.
All right, and let me back up. We do have a two A. The superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Meisberg Classroom Teachers Association concerning the teachers' evaluations, which I'm assuming is O-Test.
Now, that's the one we pulled, right? Yeah, that's the MOU we pulled. So B is actually A. I apologize, sir.
Okay, cool. So. Move on to C?
No.
Nope.
B.
Well, that's what you just said, B was A and A was B.
Well, actually, we pulled A, so B becomes A.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would just sit there going right, right.
I get it. Yeah, what was printed and what's on the actual is different.
Yeah, because I, I marked it out, had it all per- perfect, I thought, in my mind, but.
Last minute.
Yeah. B becomes A. I've never read that before. All right, so with B being A and no A being B, the superintendent and treasurer recommend that to B, which is two A, memorandum of understanding with the Meisberg Classroom Teachers Association. And we don't vote on it yet, so we can move on. We do go on. So are we going to say that C is B, B now?
Yes.
Okay. I will just do that then. That's, that's why I was confused. Okay, so two B is, to be or not to be. It is recommended by the superintendent and high school principal that the Board of Education approve Corbin Codill and K.O. Osborne for tuition-free enrollment for their senior year. This permission is only granted to a twelfth-grade student who previously attended Meisberg High School as a resident pupil during the eleventh grade year. To C is the Board of Education recommends Kelly Lee Marker and Shannon Rupert to serve on the Meisberg Parts and Recreation Advisory Board for a two-year term starting the first of January of twenty-one through the December thirty-first of twenty-two. Two D, in accordance with board policy, BHBA, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following requests for training as offered by the Ohio School Boards Association. December third, two thousand twenty, Levy Success Virtual Workshop, Ohio School Boards Association. One hundred dollar fee for Mrs. Anne Neese. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda revised A through D.
Second.
Okay, we had a first for Mrs. Angel, second for Mr. Ambler. And my comment will be that may be the toughest one I've ever been through in thirteen years. And it was my fault. So, any questions? Nope. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Human Resources Agenda Items, A. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas the following extracurricular position has been offered to those employees of the district who are licensed individuals and no such employee qualified to fill the position has or have accepted it. And whereas the school district has been advertised, has then advertised the position as available to any licensed individual who is qualified to fill it and who is not employed by the board and no such person has applied for and accepted the position. Now therefore, be it resolved that under the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code thirty-three thirteen point five-three, the following position or positions are declared available to non-certificated persons who meet standards adopted by the State Board and may be filled for a period of not more than one year at the same salary or wage offered to the certificated persons for the people activity program as indicated. Middle school cheerleading advisor, twenty-six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Middle school split competition, half fall, half winter cheerleading advisor, twenty-six dollars eight, twenty-six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Split competition, same as the other one, twenty-six dollars, twenty-six hundred dollars. Yeah, I'm going to get this right. Twenty-six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Football varsity assistant coach, thirty-four hundred and eighty-six dollars ninety-one cents. Football seventh grade coach, twenty-four hundred and seventy dollars and two cents. Winter guard head director, eighty-four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Guard middle school winter assistant director, fourteen hundred and forty dollars and sixty-five cents. Middle school winter assistant director for guard, twenty-four hundred and seventy dollars and two cents. Gymnastics head coach, forty-nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents. Gymnastics middle school coach, twenty-eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Swimming varsity assistant coach, thirty-three hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Swimming middle school coach, sixteen hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Swimming middle school coach number two, sixteen hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Wrestling middle school assistant coach, half, fourteen hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Got two of those. Wrestling assistant varsity coach, thirty-four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. Wrestling assistant varsity coach, forty-two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eleven cents. Wrestling middle school assistant coach, twenty-six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the resolution for the personnel, personnel classified extracurricular employment.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
First for Mrs. Neese, second for Mrs. Angel. Roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Abstain.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, it's passed. Moving on to item B. Is recommended by the Board of Edu-, but the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Meisberg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and an FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre, pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. I have a motion.
I move for the approval of the personnel reports certificated and classified.
Yep. Have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we had a first for Mr. Ambler, second for Mrs. Neese. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Abstain.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, it's passed. Moving on to item C. Same thing I just read. This is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports for certificated classified supplemental stipends.
I move we approve the personnel report for certificated classified supplemental.
Stipend. Okay. Got a second?
Second it.
Okay, first for Mrs. Angel, second for Mrs. Neese. Any questions?
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Abstain.
Okay, that item is passed. Next we'll move on to agreements and contracts. Is recommended by the superintendent and director of Human Resources to enter into an agreement with the META Solutions, Meta Solutions. I have a motion.
I move for the approval of agreement with Meta Solutions.
Second, please.
Second.
First for Mr. Ambler, second for Mrs. Ne-, or Angel. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay. I'd just like to say, uh, Mr. Gilbert, we really miss you being here filming us in on all this good stuff.
I'll second that.
Yeah, there you go. Um, it is recommended by the Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO, and Director of Business to approve the attached driver's share agreement with Centerville City Schools. I have a motion.
I move to approve the driver's share agreement with Centerville City Schools.
Okay. Second, please.
Second.
So Steve, can you fill us in on this a little bit, or is this?
I can.
Can you?
Um, during our scheduled fall break, Centerville found themselves with a bus drivers shortage. So they reached out to Mr. Gilbert, um, and asked if we would have two or three or four drivers that would be, you know, available to help them drive that week while we were on our fall break. So, um, Mr. Gilbert worked with Mrs. Reed, and they found three volunteers that were willing to go drive for Centerville, and they did so. Um, now, the agreement states that we would compensate our drivers accordingly, and we did. Um, and they would reimburse us, and they have. So, um, we just need the Board's approval, and we want to thank those three drivers um, that were so willing to forfeit their, their fall break and help Centerville during their time of need, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along. Is recommended by the Superintendent to enter into an agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center. Motion.
I move we approve the agreement with Warren County Educational Services.
Mr. Lewis?
I will second that.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, or?
Was this for a student attending Warren County?
That's correct. One of our students that needed place there. I think Katie's on the call if you have questions, but it's. Okay, they moved into the district already placed there, so.
Hey Katie, after all that hard work to make sure we heard you, Steve blew it. We got you.
Yep.
Yeah, I got it. Had to pick on Steve. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Lu- Mr. Lewis?
A, yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay. Is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center to provide speech services to Bishop Lybold using auxiliary funds. Motion. Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Well, I move for the approval of agreement with Warren County Educational Service Center, Bishop Lybold.
I second it.
We had a first from Mr. Lewis, a second from Mrs. Neese.
Uh, Bishop Lybold needed some additional speech services this year, um, and we were able to help them get those services using auxiliary funds, so this is their contract with, um, Warren County, but because we're the fiscal agent, I have to have the Board approve it because I'm the one that's gonna be paying the bill using their auxiliary money.
Okay, thank you.
And that's money that comes to them from the government.
Correct. It's from the state, so it's listed as a state grant on our books, and we monitor the spend and make sure that all the rules are being followed, so.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, moving along to the financial agenda items. Item 5A. Is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Uh, are you gonna go over each and every one of those individually for the next two hours?
I am not, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The reports are available for anyone to see.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Please don't make me.
Okay, um, motion.
I move for the authorization for the amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources.
Second.
We got a first from Mrs. Neese, second from Mrs. Angel.
The resolution itself is a mouthful.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
I did want to point out one thing, if you noticed, this is the, um, amended certificate where we did receive the $600,000 from Montgomery County, um, for the purchase of those 2,000 plus, uh, Chromebooks plus 14 Chromebook parts. Um, and we also got, Stacy was able to get a $48,000, um, grant that's gonna assist to offset some of the costs that we have with long-term subs that we needed to get in order to decrease, um, class sizes and things of that nature, so, um, we're moving along. So there are three new grants on the amended certificate for your approval this evening.
And thank you, and thank you, Stacy. That is definitely a needed item. Okay. I think we already did that part.
Yes.
Authorization to request advance of tax settlements year 2020. The Treasurer CFO is hereby authorized to request advances on 2020 tax settlements from the county auditor. May I have a motion?
I move for the authorization to request advance of tax settlement 2020, collection year 2021.
I second the motion.
Roll call, or you want me to explain it?
Um, well, it's up to you.
Well, there's really not much to explain other than I need your approval in order to get the taxes in as they collect them. Otherwise, we have to wait till the, all of them are collected, and we certainly don't want to do that because that, um, affects our cash flow. So as they get it, they send it to us, but we have to have the Board give me permission to make that request.
Have you, um, received anything, uh, telling us that when they might rectify the late payment? When they moved it back a month for, for the tax bills? You know, we, we received money a month later.
Right, mhm. What do you mean by rectify?
When, when are they gonna go back to the regular schedule?
I think they only postponed it this one time, you know, so to give, you know, people some additional time considering how a lot of people weren't working. But I think it's just the one-time postponement. They weren't given any additional delays.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll know that sooner or later here.
Oh, I will find out, yeah.
December 31st is right around the corner.
It is, yes.
Ho, ho, ho. All right, um, roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, and that item is passed. Okay, we'll move on to Mrs. Angel's favor this evening. The Superintendent, Treasurer, and CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve a resolution to support Senate Bill 358 with the additional educational items included, and to encourage the 133rd General Assembly to expedite the passage of the bill with those changes.
And I move we, uh, support a resolution in support of Senate Bill 358.
I second it.
Thank you. We got a first for Mrs. Angel, without being prodded. Second from Mrs. Neese. Now, I'm gonna put this one back on you, unless you want to talk about it, Mrs. Angel.
I'll let her.
This, uh, House Bill 358 is, um, it's, it's a, I'm trying to think, how do I best say this without sounding horrible? Um, as you know, it's in opposition to Ed Choice. Ed Choice Scholarship, that was based on the report card that said, you know, four of our buildings were underperforming, um, which is a flawed report card system that did that, and our buildings are not underperforming, at least, I think when Mark Twain went on the list the same year, they got the Blue Ribbon Award. So that tells you that the system is, is in and in itself flawed. Um, so during COVID and, and all the other, you know, wonderful things that happened throughout the last school year, they put it on hold, um, and didn't do the full expansion. They put that part on hold. They did enough of it, of an expansion, but, um, and those provisions are gonna expire soon. So OASBO, OSBA, all of our, um, organizations are working together to petition them to, you know, change the way they're looking at that. Now, they're voting on something else as well, but on that new issue that they're voting on, Myersburg is not on the list. Um, so, but we want to encourage them to, you know, to look at a different way of doing this and add some other elements to their decision-making when they do these scholarships.
Well, and according to the information I received, that 122 of those buildings that would qualify got either an A, B, or C
Correct.
on their report card.
Right.
Which says there's something screwed up in the whole system.
Anybody else? Go for it.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, and that is passed. The Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommends that the Myersburg City School District Board of Education pass a resolution to, in support of, and to endorse the Fair School Funding Plan as introduced in the Senate Companion Bill to substitut, House Bill 305, and is that subsidize or substitute?
Substitute. It's supposed to be substitute. It's misspelled.
A House Bill 305, and to encourage the 133rd General Assembly to expedite the passage of the bill.
If you haven't heard, or if you haven't seen the simulations that come with the Fair School, the Fair School Funding Plan that was, um, introduced by Cup and Patterson, um, was referred to as Cup, the Cup Patterson initiative before. Um, it's very easy to understand, unlike what we have now, which is not really a formula. It's just something that's been put together, frozen, dissected, put back together. Um, and there are, you know, 600-plus school districts that are frozen, or what you would refer to as on the guarantee. So it's, the formula's not working. This formula would, the way it's written, um, and in the simulations, would give Myersburg $5.2 million more in state funding. Um, so if the student enrollments, you know, stay the way they are in the simulations, you know, that amount is feasible, but given the fact that they may not be able to phase it in but over six years, that amount may be less. But, I mean, it is more money to the district, and we've been capped and losing state funding for a long time. So I think it's advantageous for us to support anything that would be easier for our community to understand, um, as well as, you know, additional funding for our students.
And they really want to pass this during the lame duck session. They want to do it before the new members come in. And Senator Peggy Lerner, who's our representative from the Dayton area, is very much in favor of this and has put forth a, uh, similar bill in the Senate. So hopefully, something is going to change this year.
Right.
That could alleviate some of our problems.
It would definitely help, because, you know, I would like to use that state funding um, calculation in our five-year, but since it's only theory right now, I can't do that. But if it passes, that will certainly have a, a huge impact on, um, our financial situation. So it would be a good thing. So please, please, please support it. Is that a good enough pitch, Mr. Toadvine?
Is that Sally O'Malley?
Hey, Tim, is that your dog?
I am so sorry. Can you hear my dog?
Yeah, she sounds better than you.
Becky, do something about her, please.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Did we do a move in a second, or did we skip that?
No.
We have not done a motion.
How about a motion?
I move resolution of support for the Fair School Funding Plan.
Second.
Got a first from Mrs. Angel, second from Mr. Ambler. Roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes. I thought I did already, but I guess I didn't.
No, you, you seconded, but.
Maybe that's what it was. Been a long bit.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2021 five-year forecast as submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the district's five-year forecast, uh, for fiscal year 2021.
I second it.
We got a, got a first from Mr. Ambler, second from Mrs. Lewis.
Did you say Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I said, and, and said it first, and then he said it, so I just kind of got, I thought it'd be cute.
Oh, okay. I missed it, sorry.
Um, I don't think you need to add anything else, do you, for the five-year forecast?
I do not. I'll submit it to ODE tonight.
Let's go.
All right. Okay, Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, good. Five-year forecast. It is passed. Another one, another one you can check off.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, we're looking at the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's 018 account unless indicated otherwise. $4,000 from Don Calp to MHS and MMS French Programs. $4,700 from MHS Band Boosters for the marching band staff stipends. Four, excuse me, four Chrome Book, Chrome Books valued at $721.63 and $1,318.37 from Parkview United Methodist Church to the Myersburg City School District for the purchase of Chrome Books. $450 from the Myersburg Baseball dugout club to the Myersburg High School baseball program for the purchase of an iPad. $73.31 from Kathy Sperry to the Myersburg City School District for the Nutrition Services Department. 150 game card decks and 140-plus stuffed. A hundred and fifty game card decks and a hundred and forty-plus stuffed animals valued at seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents from Pokemon Company International to Bear Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
I second it.
We had a first from Mr. Amsler, a second from Mrs. Nice. I'd like to thank each and every one of those individuals and companies that, um, made donations to our students. Um, you know, right now, the times are really tough, and we certainly appreciate each and every one of them, that's for sure, and the students really do. Do I have a, uh, any other comments?
Mrs., thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we need to, uh, speak about the organizational meeting. Every year, we have a, uh, to establish a, a date and a time to have an organizational board meeting for the following year. Does anybody have, uh, any recommendations?
Well, typically, we appoint the president, the present president, to be the President Pro Tem during that January meeting.
Right, we just need to set the date and time.
Set the time, yeah.
Now, if you notice there, um, Mayor Collins is available for swearing in on January fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth, twelfth, or fourteenth. So if any of those dates work, we can invite the mayor.
Tell me again the date.
January fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth, twelfth, or fourteenth. Keeping in mind, we have to have it before the fifteenth.
The only day I can't do it is the fourth.
How about the twelfth? Is that okay with everybody?
So, January twelfth, what time?
What's early she could be there, Chris?
Four thirty, probably.
Okay, well, five o'clock.
Can Tim be here that early?
Well, we don't know until, I'll think, you won't, you won't know until later on, will you, Mr. Lewis?
What's that?
Whether about the time that far out that, um, you know, the second week of January?
The twelfth, the fifth.
So Lord, come first. You tell me the date, I'll be there.
January twelfth at five o'clock.
I'll be there.
Okay. Like the way you think. So, looks like we will be holding the organizational meeting on January twelfth, five o'clock. Next, we get to the appointment of the President Pro Tem for the organizational meeting. Uh, in order to follow the proper procedures, it will be necessary to appoint a President Pro Tem to preside over the organizational meeting to be held January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. The President To- Pro Tem will be, I take it, Dale Toadvine?
Yes.
Unless you wanna advocate.
Do not tempt. Okay. Is everybody okay with what we got there? Uh, Dr. Blessing?
Yes. I have Joe's, um, report. Uh, good evening. The following is an, um, MVCTC report. The COVID nineteen, we are currently reviewing our position based on staff and student experiences. With the upcoming holiday, we will be making decisions and provide an update shortly. Building construction continues. However, the north wing is further behind and will result in a delay for occupancy there. However, our contingency plan will be used without disruption to our operation. The south wing is on schedule for completion in December with a December slash January occupancy. This swing was the most critical to our plan, and we had prioritized from the start. As you know, our levy renewal passed, and we were happy to see after final results that we were approved by over sixty percent. Thanks for all of your support. Another bit of good news, we applied for CARES Act grant through Montgomery County. Originally, we were told that we were not eligible, but we have a present, uh, a persistent, excuse me, team at the MVCTC, and after further review, we were told of the possibility of five hundred thousand for the grant. And in the end, our team efforts resulted in a grant of one million dollars. This will help provide additional career technical equipment and allow us to spread students out even more and provide a higher degree of hands-on training. We are very excited to receive these funds that will be spent directly on our students. I will have a more expansive report in December. Let me know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for doing that for, uh, Mr. Isaacovic. Uh, next, we have the Legislative Liaison, Sharon Angel.
Okay, we've already talked about the, their funding bill and the vouchers. I would encourage you to do write our senators and representatives to support both of those because they're very important to our school district. There are a couple other legislative, um, bills that have been put forward that I don't know that they're gonna get to during this lame duck series, but one of them is a bill, House Bill three, four thirty-six, that will require professional development and for screening and intervention for children with dyslexia. In addition, the bill requires school districts to establish structured literacy certification procedures and requires districts to employ specified ratios of structured literacy certified teachers. And of course, there's no money that comes with this, but anyway. Um, there's also a bill that's awaiting floor, um, floor votes in the Ohio House that includes House Bill three sixty-seven, which requires the state to recommend a job description for school counselors. The bill also requires public schools to consider those recommendations when preparing job description. I don't know what changes that will make for us because we have job descriptions for everybody. The other bill was House Bill seven sixty-seven that would modify compulsory school absent laws to specify that chronic medical conditions that are acknowledged in a child's IEP or five oh four plan shall be considered a medical excuse for purposes of absence, intervention requirements, and prohibits a school from requiring additional requirements other than what's in the IEP, which I think we already do. And that's it. But just remember to support House Bill three oh five. That means a lot of money to our district and to other districts.
Yeah, for several years. Okay, uh, back to, uh, our student achievement liaison, uh, Mr. Chris Amsler.
Well, we had already discussed that, uh, RJ White from Bauer is our, uh, District, uh, Student of the Month. However, we wanna recognize, uh, other students that, uh, were, uh, uh, recognized as well. Uh, from Bear School, we have, uh, Haley Mead. Uh, from Jane Chance Elementary, we have, uh, Maya Pinto. Uh, from Kinder Elementary, we have, uh, Selena Shafi. Uh, from Mark Twain Elementary, uh, we have Caitlin, uh, Mulner. Uh, from Medlar View Elementary, we have Amanda Dyer. Uh, from Mound Elementary, Carter Thomas. Uh, from the Mimesburg Middle School, uh, Oakley Onzlinger. And from the Mimesburg High School, we have, uh, Abby Kleinholtz. So we wanna congratulate all of our Students of the Month for October, and, uh, Mr. White as well from, uh, Bauer Elementary for being the District Student of the Month. So congratulations to all of them.
Okay. Let's go to Mrs. Nice for the, uh, South Suburban Coalition.
Um, today for that Zoom meeting and, you know, I'm not sure if this is the continued direction you all want this to be, but those other, um, the one for the students isn't attending anymore, and the one from Montgomery County isn't attending anymore. So I have been, um, watching, um, attending these through Zoom or in person, but, um, you guys can let me know if it's worthwhile anymore, if you feel it's worthwhile. Um, they did talk about the Rehi- Recovery Ohio Plan, and it's a Ohio initiative that, um, helps people with addiction and mental health. Um, the suicide rates right now and the overdoses are at a crisis rate, and they do have the capacity to help, but linking and making connections for the treatment has sometimes been a barrier, so they're working on that. There have been, there were two hundred and nineteen overdoses in two thousand and nineteen, and here in November, we already have two hundred and eighty-one for two thousand and twenty. So, and it's also Homeless and Hunger Week. Uh, another thing they had, uh, Chris Holden speak from Fostering, Ohio. It's a nonprofit. He and his brothers, three brothers, um, their mother died when they were young from an overdose, and their father was in prison, and he had, um, addiction issues as well. And they started this nonprofit, uh, because of the epidemic right now, the, the drug epidemic that's related to COVID, um, the number of foster youth have really increased. So it, it was just interesting. He and his brothers pretty much beat the statistics because kids in foster homes, um, fifty percent of those kids end up either homeless, on drugs, or they pass away. So it, he was a really neat guy that, you know, it was really neat how he and his brothers, um, have started this, and they go into group homes and they teach kids like, uh, things like, uh, managing a checkbook, filling out an application. They even get some jobs for the kids. So it was really, you know, a pretty hopeful discussion, and that was really about it.
Okay. District news and information. I really don't have a sheet as such, uh, that normally get, um, or a person that makes that up is, is ill, but I, I would like to just say this, that, uh, it's been, um, a very difficult, uh, time as far as making decisions of, as a school board and, uh, as administration and teachers and parents and everything else. I just would like to say, let people know that, um, uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of, uh, time, uh, you know, many, many, many hours put in by our administrators, um, both in school and, uh, after school and everything else. Uh, I'd like particularly, um, my, my, man, I should've saved this maybe for later, but, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, all the administrators for, um, going into the classrooms and, and teaching when, uh, when need be and, uh, you know, substituting, and, uh, our aides are just done a fabulous job, but, um, you know, and I'd like to make it really clear to everybody, uh, we don't all agree on everything, um, that's for sure. But, um, we do, uh, we're, we're, we are, uh, operating on a democracy. And, uh, but with that said, um, you know, we tend to let the majority rule, and, uh, whether, you know, we disagree or, or not, uh, we have to, you know, move forward and always keep in mind to try to do what's best for our, our kids and, uh, in our community, and that's what this board tries to do, and that's what the administration and the teachers, uh, and, and the parents and, and the kids and everybody else, they're being very involved in doing a lot of, of, of really good things right now, uh, considering the circumstances. So, um, you know, people, uh, kid, kids are still being fed when, under difficult times, and, uh, they're being taught as best that can be done. And, uh, if anybody has, um, questions, uh, the board will entertain questions. Each board member, uh, people, you know, you voted us in, and we certainly, um, are, uh, open to, we use the open door policy, this board does. Uh, uh, Dr. Blessing, uh, Mr. Homan, uh, Ms. Hagman, um, and all the other administrators. Uh, they're, they're phone call away if, if anybody out there is listening, um, because I know that there are a lot of people have a lot of different questions and things change. But, um, please just keep in mind that, uh, our hearts are in it, and we are really doing our best to, um, keep our children safe and, 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 now, we're not just talking safe from COVID, but safe from things that COVID may cause. Uh, so, um, you know, just please, please try to keep that in mind, okay? Thank you. Next, I, I would like to, uh, go around the table, uh, and we'll start down here with Mr. Amsler.
Uh, thanks, Dale. Um, first off, I'll by say that I know we're going into the holiday season, and, uh, Thanksgiving is right around the corner, a week away. Uh, I wish everybody a, uh, safe and blessed holiday, uh, with their families as much as possible. Dale, you're exactly right. I can't argue any of those, uh, points that you just made. You and I are probably one of the two that's probably out in the public the most out of the board on a daily basis for a number of different reasons, and, and, uh, I know that we are starting to filter more and more phone calls and emails and, and, uh, text messages just over within the last week. And you're right, the decisions, even today, I, as I was getting more and more, and I haven't even read some of them, um, I'm willing, uh, to continue to have those discussions. I've been downtown a couple of times, and just to get some of the information, the bits and pieces that are coming in, the, the decisions, talking with an administrator today at school. Um, and I think the more information that we get, uh, the more, uh, opinions that we get kinda opens up our eyes a little bit. I know, uh, even in my field, even though I was out in the front lines today and not really on the medic or whatever, um, yeah, I run into a duh, a bunch of different people. Um, so I think it's a discussion that we continue to have, we struggle with. Um, and there's many factors that go in with, uh, decisions that the administration makes morning, afternoon, evenings, uh, as well as, as we do. Um, so, um, bear with us. I know things change, uh, at, at a moment's notice, but we're trying to get all the information, uh, we're trying to decipher it and then make the, the, the best decision possible. So I know we'll probably all say something about that tonight as we go around the table. Um, but, um, I wanna say thank you to all of our entire staff. It's just been, um, we're not able to fill positions. People are stepping up. I know that they're stressed out. I know that they are, uh, taxed, um, and it's not going unnoticed. Um, and it weighs on all of our decisions that we make continuously on a daily basis. So you could talk about it forever, but I'll just say again, have a thanks, a wonderful Thanksgiving as much as possible with your family, and, uh, try to stay safe as much as possible. So, and I'll pass it on to you.
Yeah, thanks, Dale, for what you said. I, uh, agree with Chris that this is an ongoing discussion, and things could change quickly. Um, but, you know, we're willing to do what we feel is gonna be best for our kids and community. Um, I do wanna thank all the staff from the bottom of my, of my heart. I, I get pretty emotional thinking about the things that you have done and how you have. you have done and how you have served our students, and I just thank you. I wanted to thank Tim Hortons for the sandwiches that they brought to the high school, and I know a lot of teachers brought food in the day that we didn't have food at the high school. So that was a great team effort, and it's just really exciting when things like that happen, you know, in order to make the day better for our students. It makes us feel good, too. So thank you.
I'll just say ditto to everything everyone has said. I just want to make sure the community understands and our staff is that we do not make decisions in a vacuum. We listen very carefully to all of the input we get from both students, staff, administrators, Dr. Blessing, and I think we all listen very carefully so that we always have our students at the heart of every decision we make. So I'm very thankful at this point. We've been able to get through nine weeks, the first quarter. We have Thanksgiving coming up. That'll give us a few days' break. I hope it doesn't make things worse. I hope the community families are very careful, keep themselves and their students safe. And again, I'll reiterate what Anne said. Thanks to all of those who stepped up for our high school students the day we thought they would have, not have lunches there. And I think our community is very blessed with what we see coming forward to help us. So, thank you.
I don't think there's anything I can add to that. I mean, what a great team we have in place, just teachers. Everyone has really pulled together to do the best they possibly can during difficult times. I mean, Mr. Homan has been running around to buildings and filling in when he can, Amy Dobson, Stacy Moore, and I just think, you know, what a great team we have in place. So, thanks. We know you're stressed, and hopefully we'll, relief will come soon.
Yeah, and I would like to just, I kind of skipped myself there a little bit, too, but I would just like to thank the, the community for everything that they are doing. And when I say they, I'm talking about the civic leaders, the parents, grandparents. You know, there's a lot of ambiguity sometimes about what's really going on when you hear the Montgomery County Health District saying one thing, and then maybe the school, you know, people think, well, the school should be doing this, or they should be doing that. But I want to make it clear to some people that, like I said, we don't all agree on what we think that we should do, but, and we don't always agree with what the Health District thinks, that's for sure. And it just, because, part of the reason is, is because if you live in the 45342, or if you live in the 45459 zip codes, there could possibly be a very large difference in what's going on in even those small areas. So, you know, people say, well, why is Centerville on remote and Miami'sburg is not, or why is, or on hybrid, or whatever? No, and, and, you know, we have, the high school's doing hybrid, and the, the middle school has a team that's, that's, that's not attending, but what, the whole idea is to keep the kids in school that can possibly be in school. And, you know, that's the idea behind what's going on. But as Anne and everybody said, folks, it's a local thing. It's a local decision, and please, please keep that in mind. Just because, you know, the state says one thing, and the county health department says another thing, it doesn't mean that Miami'sburg School Board is going to say the same thing. Okay? Mr. Homan, you want to speak?
Just have a couple comments real quick, just echoing what all of you said. You know, we, we've made it the nine, the first nine weeks together, and that would not have happened without the support and dedication of all of our staff. And when I say all of our staff, it takes every single employee to make this happen. The, the amount of support that we've seen from teachers to jump in and to fill in, and our classified folks being able to jump in and fill in, has been tremendous. So I just want to publicly say that. I know we've said it before, but just being out in the buildings where we can help, we try to help as best as we can to do that, and to see the camaraderie in the buildings among all the staff in the buildings. We talk about what we're thankful for for Thanksgiving. I'm very thankful for that. The amount of support that we have gotten from our parents thanking us for keeping in school and helping them, helping them be able to keep their jobs and support and put food on their table. They've been very appreciative of that. And so when we talk about, Dale, I know you mentioned, and Anne and everyone, this is a topic, we're living at 24/7, seven days a week, constantly looking at data, we're constantly with the Health Department. Katie is the quarantine queen, as I call her with the numbers, looking to see what are the issues, what are the problems that are arising. And so we take a look at every single one of those things as we do that. We take a look at the peaks, we take a look at the dips. Our nurses are fabulous of analyzing that data. You know, at some point, might we have to make some tweaks to it? I don't know. We'll, we'll take a look and see that. You know, as I said, at the special board meeting last week, subs are hard to get right now, and our staff is really stepping up to do it, but at some point, we're going to have to maybe make some decisions of how that works. I know we've gotten a lot of fear of phone call, or I shouldn't say fear of phone calls, but from parents this week, very much worried about going remote, and their jobs of being able to stay home with their kids, and how does that look like, and they're wanting questions if we did a hybrid, if we did that. So there's a lot of factors that go into that. And so what I'm trying to say is, sometimes if we have to make a change in plans, one plan is not going to be maybe for the whole district. You know, we have to take a look at each individual section. You know, what we did at the high school in terms of a hybrid has helped tremendously, you know, in terms of that. That doesn't necessarily mean everyone goes on a hybrid. Okay? So please understand that we look at every, every single time we get a case where there was a quarantine, we look to see what were the factors, what happened, you know, was it a unique situation? So I just want to make sure our public knows that we do take it seriously every single day. We look at subs every single day. It's the last thing we do before we go to bed at night, and it's the first thing we do when we get up in the morning, to see where that's at. But I think the community needs to know it's something, like you said, we take very seriously, and we try to make data decision, data-driven decisions in terms of that. So, but to talk about Thanksgiving, I am very, very thankful to live in a community with our staff that would do anything and everything for our kids. And I'm very proud to say, as a resident, having three kids in the district, I am very blessed to, to work and to have my kids, you know, being taught and being taken care of by our staff. So, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. And Laura, it's up to you.
Wait a minute.
Oh, maybe not.
Well, ladies, ladies before gentlemen, we'll let Laura go in front of Tim today.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Well, yeah, echo what everyone has said. Definitely want to make sure that our staff, I appreciate Steve, you kind of covering our community and our parents and what, what we're doing. We know the staff is taxed. We know that you are giving up plan time. You are, you're not getting masks breaks. You're being asked to cover classrooms. We, just so our community and our, our board knows, like, we do have sub shortages right now. I don't know if you tuned in, if they put that interview out today. So I know that we are getting, we've had several staff members reach out and want us to make sure that we are, we are discussing options. And, you know, we look at data, and, you know, our COVID numbers after fall break did peak. You know, there were days, I'm looking at some data that Katie compiled, so thank you, Katie. I know you've kind of been working on this all day. You know, there's an early November where we had 300 absences, and that's staff and students across 10, 10 buildings. There, there was a week in early November where we had 300 or more absences a day. As we have moved closer to the 20th of November, this week, we've only been in the 200s. So in terms of positive COVID cases, I think we're only at 12, around 12 this week for an entire dis, though those numbers are, are better, but that doesn't help alleviate the sub strain and our teachers feeling that we're not taking their wishes into account. So I know we've kind of talked about the high school hybrid model, a remote model at one of our teams at the middle school. We have an eighth grade team at the middle school seeing a quarantine. We had the public health advisory, I think is, as Dale mentioned, that was not an order, so it was an advisory. And remember back when the, the codes were put into place, code red, code purple, both advised schools to go remote, but our, our health director, Jeff Cooper, has said we're going to support schools that feel their communities need to be open, as Steve mentioned, for their parent, our parents to continue to work and to earn their incomes, especially at this crucial holiday time. We've had several meetings this week with union leadership on the teaching side. We've had principal meetings. We've spoken with the board to try to think out of the box. How can we alleviate the sub situation? How can we alleviate our teacher, like, burnout and just kind of, they're just feeling at their wits' end. You know, we, we know we have contingency plans for the hybrid model. We have them for remote, but we've also looked at, you know, some schools have a four-day in-person where they go to four days a week, and the students have a soft remote learning day. That doesn't mean that we have Chromebooks going home, and they have to log on and see their teacher that day. It could be a remediation day, a skills check day, some independent work. So I, we have a lot of things on the table, and I want our staff to know that we are, we do want to keep you and our students in school, but we also know that there can be breaking points. So we have discussed a four-day model that wasn't part of one of our contingency plans, where, right now, our high school kind of is following that with the hybrid, where they have school every other day for the groups, but then there is one day a week where those students all stay home, and our staff plan and work and have check-ins with their students. So I want everyone to know that we have some options on the table. We are very seriously pursuing them, because we want to make sure, as we keep collecting data, and as I referenced just a minute ago, just our daily attendance, we also look at our daily COVID numbers, our daily quarantines, but we know that our substitutes are limited, and we want to see if we can alleviate that, and we don't put a strain on our parents with extended childcare, a remote plan, or even hybrid. So we, we want everyone to know that they're in of a four-day a week discussion, and we're not sure where it's going to go, but I just want everyone to, that we're doing our, can to keep our, the best we can to keep our doors open in the most impactful ways. And, you know, I, I'm thankful to be a part of Miami'sburg. A lot of folks say, why did you make the change this year? You know, we, we have to step up, and we have to lead, and we have to think out of the box. So I'm excited to be a part of that, and I know there's a lot of discussion that still needs to take place, and every decision we make, there's lots of discussion and data that takes place. So, I don't want to jump in on Tim, so I'll let him, and we can, we can all kind of digest that.
Dr. Blessing.
Yes, Chris.
Hey, our struggle, I know the subs are shortage across the region. However, do we struggle on more particularly on Mondays and Fridays than any other day?
Well, on our data, I mean, typically Fridays and Mondays are, and I think Steve, you can jump in, or any of us can jump in. But yes, those are typically higher days. We would have to look at our data to know, but typically, yes, on Mondays and Fridays, Steve, those are normal high days. Right now, all of them are high in the scheme of things. So, but those are typically the most when you're, when you're doing data analysis on sub shortages. Mondays and Fridays can be big days.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing that does help is with some of our local districts going remote, we've already had those subs saying, can I please get on your sub list? Because some of those are looking to, to still be, you know, employed and helping out. So we'll see how many come from that. So I know we already had about a handful and a half this week already call, and asked to be put back on, so.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Not very nice going last.
I thought they always said save the best for last.
They lied.
Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Again, I wanted to thank everyone for their donations. The way everybody stepped up at the high school, that was just awesome. And to hit on like what Steve said, I mean, that's, we've seen that, all of us that have lived in Miami'sburg for a long time, we've seen that over and over and over. When people need things, people come forward, and it's just awesome community. We've heard a lot from different teachers the last couple days, and just so they know, it's not, it's not falling on deaf ears. We, we hear it's not going unnoticed. We know how hard everybody's working. You know, giving up plans, doing double work with students that are present, students that are quarantined. I mean, it, it does take time, and it does take a toll. And we do hear you. A lot of things are being discussed, so hang in there. Wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We went, well, let's see, we would, usually we have about 25 at our house. This year, we weren't going to do that, but now it's going to be two of us. I wanted to thank, real quick, my wife, Becky. This Saturday, we've been married 40 years, and to throw out an old football term, I definitely outpunted my coverage. I just thank her for putting up with me for 40 years. So, thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else got anything else they'd like to add?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. This time, the board will be moving into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. This will be, this particular executive session will be to conduct the annual evaluation of Superintendent Dr. Blessing. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move, we move into executive session.
I second it.
Okay, we had a first for Mrs. Angel, second for Mrs. Neese. Time in is 7:51. Is that AM or PM? I'm starting to wonder.
Let's hope it's PM.
Okay. Go call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes!
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're going to sign, there will be no business conducted after executive session, correct, sir?
There, there will be no official business conducted, no voting, no anything after the executive session. We will go home.
Well, there'll be one you'll have to adjourn, you know, come out of executive and adjourn.
But that's, but adjourn is before the after.
Just saying, nobody has to stay on the Google Meet, because we're going to turn that off. The only other thing that's going to happen this evening is you'll exit.
Thank you for listening.
Adjourn.